Yeah, I did.
Oh, there you are. Perfect. All right. So everybody's in there. So let me just kind of start with where we left off on June 22, which I don't know about you, it feels like a lifetime ago. So as a reminder, what Philip did was he left off, he had done a whole bunch of focus groups before the pandemic, you know, and then the pandemic set him back, but he finished them up and he came forward with these, the sort of mastery of content, core competencies and competencies, and then a visual theme that you were kind of kicking around as an idea. So that that was from, the first page there is from the June 22, 2020 meeting, and I think you voted on that. I think that was sort of where you came down.
Yeah, we did.
So clearly, you know, what we could do is just take that and, you know, parlay it just as that into a vision of the graduate. But, you know, I thought it might be nicer, and I want to get your feedback on this, to kind of put a Portland spin on it, right? I mean, if you look at those competencies, I would say those reflect a lot of different towns, a lot of different school districts. My thinking about these is, is the more Portland-based we can make it, the more unique to our town. I think it would be, you know, resonate with us more effectively. So if you go down to the next page where it says draft, this is kind of my idea. I just want to share with you. And look, I am completely open. If you think it's a lousy idea and you'd rather just stick with a straight list of what our values are, I can go with that, too. So please don't feel like you'd hurt my feelings if you're like, no, Charles, we think that that's hokey, or we don't want to go with it. But I want to get your feedback on it. If you think that this is a good way to articulate our values, I'll continue to tweak it, and then I'll talk to you a little bit about the visual theme and my idea for how we go about that. So let's just kind of read through it together. So Portland Public Schools' Vision of the Graduate. The mission of the Portland Public Schools is to ensure that all students graduate with the skills, dispositions, and content knowledge necessary to achieve personal excellence and contribute to the betterment of our town, state, nation, and global community. The Portland Public Schools' vision of the graduate is symbolically grounded in three historical entities that make Portland unique: the Aragoni Bridge, the Portland Brownstone Quarry, and the Connecticut River Shipbuilders.
Nice.
So our students will be bridge builders, right? The Portland Public Schools' vision of the graduate draws inspiration from the Aragoni Bridge, which was constructed in 1938 and spans the Connecticut River, connecting Portland to Middletown and places beyond. Portland Public School graduates are bridge builders who forge meaningful connections with others through skilled collaboration, effective communication, empathy, and open-mindedness, and civic engagement. So the italicized parts there, you'll probably recognize, those came from the values that came out of the focus groups.
Right.
Our students are critical, creative, and strategic thinkers. The Portland Public Schools' vision of the graduate reflects on the proud legacy of the Brownstone Quarry. From 1690 to 1938, skilled workers excavated and shaped the quarry's signature brownstone that was used across our country to construct famous and lasting landmark buildings. Like the workmen and workwomen of the Brownstone Quarry, Portland's graduates are creative, critical, and strategic thinkers. Graduates pursue innovative solutions to complex problems via media and technology literacy, numerical fluency, and scientific accuracy. Independent and empowered citizens. From 1821 to, I should say, two, excuse me, 1821, two.
We were going to fact check this later.
Yeah, that's right. To 1844. The S. Gildersleeve and Sons Company produced 135 vessels on the Connecticut River in Portland, Connecticut. Portland's Gildersleeve shipbuilders were renowned for their sturdy craftsmanship, entrepreneurship, and ingenuity. Like these inspiring craftsmen, Portland graduates are independent and empowered citizens. They maintain lofty personal expectations while demonstrating a growth mindset and commitment to well-being rooted in a clear conception of self-worth. And then sort of down below, I sort of characterize those values that came out of the focus groups into bridge builders, creative, critical, and strategic thinkers, and independent and empowered individuals.
I think is wonderful.
I do, too. I want to add one thing, or I want to ask if everybody thinks about this. The Gildersleeve Fund is directly related to the Gildersleeve Shipbuilding family. And do we want to add, not only were they entrepreneurial, but they were civic-minded and leaving an educational fund? And I don't know enough of the history of the fund to know how directly related it is to the shipbuilding company, but I would imagine that it roots itself in civic and empowered citizens, citizenry.
Sure, I can add that as one of the.
You can add another word in there.
Yeah.
Renowned for their blah, 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 community.
I guess it was civic-mindedness, right?
Contributions to the local education or.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we benefit so much from that fund named after the Gildersleeves, I think.
Yeah. I just think it's inspired. I want to know how you, with all the craziness going on, you assign someone to research these days, right?
Yeah, well, of course. I mean, I liked, I mean, I'm a golfer, and I thought maybe the three awesome golf courses would be nice to include. But I also felt like, clearly, the quarry, the shipbuilders, and the bridge are things that people clearly connect to Portland. And I look at those three things as, holy cow, those were pretty impressive people that built those and worked in those and, you know, laid the foundation for Portland. And I always, I like this idea of symbolically reflecting on it as we look to the future. So it could also.
An anchor in the past, that anchor in tradition there. That's great.
If you like it, what I would propose to do now is, I would love to engage our students. So I wasn't, obviously, wasn't able to do this over the summer. But if you like these sort of three visual images of the bridge, the quarry, and the shipbuilders, I would bring this to potentially Dylan or our art teachers here and ask our students to come forward with a visual image that incorporates those three images into this sort of portrait of the graduate.
That's just perfect.
Can I just offer a couple little, very minor things?
Of course.
Yep.
Um, I'd have to fact check this, but I don't think there is a Portland quarry. I mean, a brownstone quarry. I think there were actually a number of quarries.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, yep.
Um, that's one thing. Another thing, as you, I mean, this is great. I love this, this whole idea of having, you know, symbols and themes, right, as an English teacher? This, this could also be, I think, a really good chance for you to somehow maybe incorporate in there that a lot of these industries, and particularly the quarries, actually brought what we have here is a relatively diverse community. Like, a lot of people came here from, you know, a number of different countries specifically to be a part of these industries. And I think that's a fairly unique thing to kind of tie into your, you know, your equity.
Yep.
Work.
Do you think there was more than, are you saying there was more than one brownstone quarry? Or that there are, there are many quarries in Portland, but the Brownstone Quarry is probably the most famous? Because we can trace the building of Brooklyn and San Francisco to that.
Right, but I, I'm just saying, I was looking at it in terms of editing.
Okay.
When you call it the Brownstone Quarry, I think that there were actually a couple of different quarries. I think there were like three that quarryed brownstones. So when you, and again, this is me as an English teacher. You capitalize brownstone quarry, it makes it sound like there's one, but there were multiple ones.
Okay, I see, I see what you're saying.
Small B.
Easy edit, the Portland Brownstone Quarries.
And not, I mean, that's not inappropriately capitalized, though. I think that, you know, like, there's a Wikipedia article about
the Portland Brownstone Quarries. We just need to make it clearer.
Yeah, right. So, I mean, that's nitpicky, but it also, you know, there, it's fact checking.
Right.
The other thing, and I'm not sure about this, I, you know, I'd have to talk to, you know, who are from town. But I love the idea of talking about the Gildersleeve Fund in relation to philanthropy, unity. But that fund, there are a number of Gildersleeves still living in town, descendants. And there's a little bit of, you know, it might, might just be worth, I don't know. I don't know. That might be something to kind of research and think about a little bit.
You mean, it might upset them to think we would?
I, I, I don't really know. I wouldn't want to say, but I, I like the idea of talking about their legacy. Yeah, that's all I'll say.
I mean, I think if it's, you know, if they're, you know, not getting along, the fund still stands as one of our, you know, primary ways to fund things that are not in our budget.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense to acknowledge that that's an act of philanthropy on the part of the family.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying, there are a number of them that are still in town or in.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, that, I think would only be good, but I'd just, you know, be aware that there are actual, you know, living Gildersleeves.
Well, there are, and a couple of them were actually on the Gildersleeve Fund when I, when I applied for a couple of grants.
Right. That's it. But no, I love the idea of connecting all of those, those things to the vision. That's, that's very cool, very creative.
I love it.
We're not suggesting we remove the reference to the Gildersleeve and Sons, is that?
No, I, I, no, I just think that, you know, just be mindful that, that, you know, that's.
Do you think there's anything there in what's written that we should be critically cautious about?
I, I don't, but I'm, but I'm not them. I, I mean, it's very complimentary. It's very complimentary. If I were them, I would think.
Yeah, that's how I look at it, too. And maybe, is it, is it the additional talking about the fund? Do you think that would be the issue?
I, I don't really know. It's just, it's something to just be mindful of.
I don't know if it's necessary to specifically reference the fund in here. It doesn't, I don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I wouldn't. I don't.
Well, we're talking, well, we're talking about empowered citizens and civic-mindedness. I think it was civic-minded for them to set aside an amount of money for education. Whether the family, eight generations later, or five generations later, they all like each other, they may not. Maybe Chris is alluding to something that, that's not aware, we're not aware, because we benefit from the fund. We don't have to benefit from the family drama, as it were. And I don't think they would be upset by it.
I'm not, my, my, in looking at this paragraph, my feeling is just that we're making an analogy, you're making an analogy, between, between the shipbuilders in the 1800s and a growth mindset, a commitment to well-being, and a clear conception of self-worth. And so it doesn't feel relevant to me to reference the Gildersleeve Fund that was definitely not around in the 1800s, but is, and is certainly very helpful and wonderful, and our district benefits from it tremendously, but not relevant to these particular skills.
Well, we didn't, yeah, we didn't, we didn't mention it per se. We just said philanthropy, so.
I, I would just leave it out. That's my only suggestion.
I would leave it out, too.
All right.
Thank you, Laurel.
I mean, and the only other thing in that paragraph is, I would, if you're looking for feedback, I would change the word craftsman to craftspeople.
Yes, do it.
Yeah.
Let me do that.
We still miss that stuff.
Crafts. Yep, absolutely, absolutely. All right, well, if you like it, why don't I do this? Why don't I take it, I, I always, again, I think I'll bring it back to you again at some point with some visual images. You know, so I'll kind of lay it out. We, you know, we have some, I can do, you know, kind of the wordsmanship of it, but I'm definitely not a artist, that's for sure. But we have lots of very talented student artists and teachers. So let me kind of bring this to our art department and, and bring back some ideas for you, some visual images that, you know, will both be, you know, visually appealing, but then articulate the values of it. What I'm also, and I've already started this process, and Eric is now picking up and doing a great job. But what I'm also going to bring to you is, for each of these skills, the collaboration, the communication, the open-mindedness, the civic engagement, the problem-solving, tech literacy, and so on, each of those is, looks different in a second-grade classroom, fourth-grade classroom, and high school classroom. So what I'm going to also share with you, in addition to the, the visual, is what essentially amounts to a K through 12, and it wouldn't go on this in terms of the document that will look nice someday hanging in our hallways, but it will be used by our teachers to help keep track of if, how, and when our students are developing these skills, beginning in our preschool classrooms up through high school. So the thing I like about this portrait of the graduate, you know, my, my biggest, I guess, fault for the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is where a lot of these things derive from, was, you know, the old-school mission statements that we had to come up with were always very high school-centric. This is a pre-K through 12 document. So what we want to engage our teachers in now is, if these are our values, if this is what our vision of the graduate, of that 18-year-old student is, how do we develop these through our curriculum programming, extracurricular, co-curricular, the whole experience, starting as early as three, four, and five-year-olds? And then what does that look like at each step along the way? And those come out in our curriculum maps, in our assessment calendars, and in the rubrics that we come up with. So I have some really good ideas about how, how we will make sure that we live this, right? So that once we adopt it, and once we, we say that, yes, this is what we aspire for, or aspire to achieve in our graduates, I'll be able to document for you how that is accomplished at each grade level spanning all the way back to Valley View. So that's some exciting work that we have ahead of us. Any questions on?
Oh, I think it's a great beginning.
Me, too.
All right, awesome. I'm excited about it. This is the fun side, part of the job, and this, the visionary work and not just managing COVID, right? So I'll be back to, probably not by the 15th, but I'm imagining sometime around the end of September, October, I'll engage, I'm looking at Dylan now and others who teach our graphic design classes. And I'll come forward with, I think, some really cool visual images that incorporate the shipbuilding, the quarry, and the bridge to visually or symbolically represent what we're trying to put forward here. So again, my tentative goal is that I would have something to present to you, hopefully for approval, sometime in the October timeframe. But that may be a little ambitious, might be late October, depending on how things go and how quickly I can have our students bring forward some ideas. But if you like the idea, I've got a direction, and that's where we'll go.
Very much so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
All right, stay tuned on that then. Thank you. All righty, so let's turn our attention then to our goals, right? So I see I have Chris, Dave, there we go, Laurel, Lauren are in here. Meg, you said you printed yours. Tim, you said you had printed yours.
I've got mine right here. I'm good.
I had. But I'm going to go anyway.
All right, good. So let me spend a few minutes walking you through these. These are really big, you know, and they're, they're definitely going to be multi-year goals, especially when we get to the last one, where we start talking about a five-to-10-year plan that involves a lot of work that we have to do on our facilities and other things. So, so I see this as, you know, addressing what are now the very short-term in our face needs, but also starting us down a road that, that I think is going to lead us, you know, five, 10 years down the road and help us craft a vision, and then at some point advocate for the resources and bonding packages necessary for us to do what we need to do with some aging facilities. So I, I think the easiest way to do this is, let's just walk through it, right? So I'm going to start us with the 2020, 2021 Portland Board of Education Goals. The Portland Board of Education recognizes that many worthy initiatives are underway throughout the Portland Public Schools. The Portland Board of Education Goals do not seek to minimize the importance of other personal, departmental, school-specific, and/or district goals that are not directly referenced in this, or in the 2020, 2021 Portland Board of Education Goals. The goals outlined below seek to prioritize those initiatives that the board believes will have the greatest influence on teaching, learning, and school climate in the Portland Public Schools. I just started there because lots of times, you know, some teachers in their corner of the organization will see this and say, oh, well, you know, it doesn't talk about my program that I'm working so hard on this year. I think it's, it's just an important way for us to recognize that lots of people have other goals that we may not be directly identifying here, but we value those, too. But this is really where we're, we're going to put the majority of our, our energy into. And I don't think a lot of people will give pushback, but I have heard that criticism in the past that, oh, you forgot to include this one, or, you know, you forgot to include my department in it. So I just thought that kind of explanation would be a good place to start, but I can take it out if you're not comfortable with it.
I like, you know, I like it. I wonder if we couldn't change that second part of that sentence to more of a positive tone. Instead of, they don't seek to minimize the importance, or to kind of turn it into a, that they, they emphasize, or they build on, or something more, I don't know, just a more positive statement.
I think it could be, sorry, Tim, I didn't mean to talk over you there. It could just be worded more maybe to talk about our role as the Board of Education is to address things at a policy level as opposed to the nuts-and-bolts level type thing. I think that you're kind of saying the same thing, Charles.
Yep.
You know, we're not talking about every specific program, but as the, the policy-driven part of the school system, that's kind of our, our, what we're talking about as opposed to specifics in each, you know, level of curriculum or whatever.
Right. All right, well, let me, let me wordsmith that a little bit and see if I could spin it positive.
But it makes sense to frame it as like the Board of Ed goals, you know, instead of not seeking to minimize, that they seek to guide and support the other personal, departmental, school-specific, and district goals.
All right, let me do this. Insert.
Hey, the Portland Board of Education creates goals in addition to those of other personnel, departmental, school-specific, I don't know, something along those lines.
Support.
So let me.
Yeah, because these are, these are a beautiful framework for every, I mean, from, when I look at these five goals, these, these are the, these are the house, and then every other room in the house has their own priorities and goals, but all of them are kind of held by the bigger picture.
Yeah.
So make, so make the sentence begin or, or highlight the district goals. You know, the, the goals are district goals with specific personal, departmental, and, and school-specific goals to, you know, to follow or to.
You can say they're designed, sorry, were they designed to, you know, assist with the implementation of departmental, personal, school-specific, and other district goals that are referenced? Or is it, you can, you can come up with a wordsmith on it. Something that, to me, I, that I wouldn't start, that's kind of a thing, with that kind of a, more of a, you know, a negative of.
Yeah, I'll, I'll rework the sentence, so it's, the board recognizes and appreciates departmental-specific, individual, personal goals that are not, that are not included here, you know, so that.
Well, they are. It's just, this is the framework that kind of establishes all those other goals. It's our job to do the broad strokes.
Exactly.
And everybody else does, you know.
Yeah.
So what you can say is, the Portland Board of Education recognizes.
And values, yeah.
And values, that this is the framework for the personal, departmental, and school-specific goals. Recognizes and values.
All right.
And I would say Portland Board of Education district goals. So I would put district goals in, in before recognizes. And that we value the personal, departmental, and school-specific.
Oh, Sharon, there you are. You're going up again.
Get my bylaws.
Does your computer aim down at all? Because I don't know if, you know, we're looking at your forehead up for the entire. There you are.
Hi.
All right, so let me, let me walk you through these. So clearly, goal one, and, you know, I spent some time, I think we would all agree that maximizing student faculty and staff health and safety during the 2020, 2021 school year in the context of the ongoing national pandemic is clearly goal one. And I kind of have these broken down in terms of importance, you know, that is goal, goal one. And that is going to, you know, until this is over, that's going to require, has required all of our time and effort. And let me go through the initiatives, because, yeah, they're, I think they're where we are now, but we are going to be monitoring this closely going forward. So initiative one is to sort of design, not to, sort of, but is to design and be prepared to implement fully in-person hybrid and fully remote teaching and learning models that respond to COVID-19 transmission rates. So we have those three ready to go. Our, our first decision point is going to be at the end of September in terms of whether we return fully after Columbus Day, whether we, or whether we stay in hybrid. And then, of course, you know, if something comes, happens over the next two weeks, if Labor Day is a, a time that spread this virus and, and we spike, we would be prepared to go back to fully remote. Anybody have any issue with that? That's pretty much laid out. So then, of course, design and implement a plan of remote learning for families that choose not to return for in-person teaching and learning during the pandemic. That is underway, right? We have designed that program. It is now implemented, and we're supporting the 240 or so families that have their, their students staying home. Then this initiative, I just want to, I put it out there, I'm willing to take it out, but, but I, I, I would like to feel the support that, that I am empowered to power the superintendent of schools to use the metrics outlined in the Adapt, Advance, Achieve, Connecticut Plan to Learn and Grow Together, to determine when transition between the models based on COVID-19 transmission rates and related factors, and take other measures to ensure the health and well-being of Portland students in the context of the ongoing pandemic.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's just sort of saying to me, you know, Charles, we got your back. You know, you got to work with the health officials, and if you see a spike above 25 and go to remote, that's what we've got to do. And, and, you know, I guess it's kind of a, we got your back, Charles.
Absolutely.
I think that was in the order, too, wasn't it? That the, we had talked about that you, the state, basically, emergency role, or the Board, or the State Board of Education gave that authority to superintendents.
It does.
It does, but I'd like to get it from you, too.
Oh, absolutely. No, I don't question that. I just wanted to, yeah, because we're not doing anything outside of what's required anyway.
Right.
But, well, technically, we are, because the model said we could have gone in-person, but we supported Charles to go hybrid. So there's a little bit of discretion in there that's not written out. We just got to understand that.
Right. Yeah, and my goal is for us to work glove and hand here, right? That, that, you know, I, I think that's the only way we can do this effectively. So I'm hoping that that initiative sort of outlines that, yes, you're empowering me to do it, but, you know, it's, it's going to be in collaboration with you, and, and I think that leads into the next initiative there, right? Which is.
I, I see it as the same kind of snow day policy. You know, you have the right at four o'clock in the morning, if there's 50 people that are sick with COVID, to, to call and say, we're not coming to school today. We're going to close the schools. I think it's a snow day kind of a thing. So we, we would have your back and not leave you hanging out there. We would all make the, the decision, but it would be, you know, it would be yours to make on a, on a very quick turnaround, if need be.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that is the reality at Valley Regional High School. I'm not sure if you guys have saw the news, but there is a high school in the state now that did close for that reason, first one.
Yep.
So.
I don't wish on us, but.
Valley.
Valley Regional.
Yep.
Oh.
Do you want to include the word support, empower, and support the superintendent of schools?
Love it.
Okay.
Thank you. And that kind of leads into the next one, there's sort of a flow to this, that, you know, collaborate with the superintendent of schools, leadership team, faculty and staff to determine how resources need to be allocated and redeployed in order to support teaching and learning in the three models, and for families that choose not to return for in-person teaching and learning. So I think that one's important there, and I'm going to just sort of explain why. Stephanie's been updating you, and I am aware, and you guys are aware, that we're looking at about a $325,000 bill right now that wasn't budgeted last year, right? That's, that's real. Now, if, if there's a vaccine in October and we can close the PVLA, that bill will be a lot less. That's a, that's a projection if we have to run PVLA all year. But even then, we still have, you know, about, I'm going to say, somewhere in the neighborhood of $140,000 of Plexiglas and masks and, you know, facilities upgrades that we've had to do to implement the plan. I put that there because, you know, I put that there because, you know, as you know, and and I just want to lay it out there, I'm not suggesting any of this right now. But when we're faced with a budget deficit, there are three ways out, right? Way one, which is what we're doing now, which is a complete budget freeze, right? We are, we are not spending any money. We're trying to freeze our lines and only, you know, spend money on those things that are most critical, like electricity, and we, the lights have to stay on. And that if we can freeze our way to make up this, we will, we will do our best. That's a a big hill to climb in terms of a freeze, but it it's a good first step. The second way, of course, is we hope that if Washington DC can get its act together and pass a second round of funding, that that would open a new federal revenue stream like the CARES Act, 70,000 that we got already. So hopefully, there would be another federal revenue stream or state revenue stream that came our way. That's our hope. We haven't seen it yet, but fingers crossed. Of course, the third less attractive option is go back to the town and ask for a local revenue stream to be opened up, right? That not something we want to do, but if we can't freeze our way out of it, then we have to hope that a federal, state or local revenue stream opens. If none of those things open, then we may find ourselves in a position, and and if we're here, it would come sometime around January, February, where I would be going back to the bargaining units and asking for givebacks or looking at the very real possibility of layoffs and furloughs to cover the deficit. So we're either going to freeze our way out of it, we're going to hope for additional revenue streams at the federal, state or local level. We're going to go, or we're going to go back to the bargaining units and either ask for givebacks and or potentially looking at layoffs and furloughs. None of that, none of those options are great, except for the federal or state revenue stream, of course. But I think that it's important to, as an initiative here, have allocate and redeploy. Those are the the key words in there that we're going to have to watch this closely from a fiduciary perspective and be prepared to fill in the gaps when they can't be filled in through those, you know, various mechanisms.
Right.
Not good options.
I think you got to add prayer to that, too.
Yeah.
That's, you know. Yeah, and rain dances and, well, I mean, I think it's realistic, we go back, you know, we would have to go back to the town. I think before we would ever talk about layoffs or, you know, that kind of stuff and say, hey, this is what we need. But yeah, I think a lot of uncertainty there.
Yeah, but but as an initiative, I see that that's what this represents, you know, that. And then the last one, which I think is a little more hopeful, let's leave on a good note here. I think it's important for us to examine lessons learned during the process of implementing the three models and the Portland Virtual Learning Academy and incorporate best practices into future district initiatives, right? I think we're going to learn a lot. This is going to push us to teach in new and different ways. And and I think it's our responsibility to say, here's what worked. Let's not abandon those and just go back to pre-pandemic life. Let's figure out a way to bring that into the potential of, hey, no more snow days or, you know, my ultimate dream, I'm not kidding, is someday we would have year-round schooling. It doesn't even mean in person, but wouldn't it be wonderful if if out of this we got to a point where we didn't have to worry about summer loss anymore because kids were always learning, right?
Yeah, they're always engaging in study, even remotely. Charles, I had a question I forgot to ask on the, and then I'm sure completely fits here, but I think based on what you were saying before, if if we, if all things go as we hope, and after Columbus Day, we return to full-time classroom, does that mean we no longer offer the option for kids to be part of the Learning Academy? Does that Latin, Learning Academy end then?
No.
Or do we just hope it reduces?
We hope it reduces.
Yeah.
The Learning Academy will end when the pandemic is over, I think.
Right. So we're not going to see a big drop in those costs when we return to to full classes, in all likelihood.
I I think that, you know, the PVLA will pull up the the tent pegs when the vaccine is is distributed.
Yeah. I like that analogy.
You know, everybody's feeling completely comfortable coming back, right? I mean, but I think that that's concurrent with either a vaccine or an effective treatment.
Value in the water supply, so.
That might help.
I don't know.
Whatever works.
Absolutely. All right, is everybody comfortable with goal one? Can we go to goal two?
I am.
Great, Charles.
So again, these are prioritized in terms of what I think are are most important. They sort of fit with my understanding of Maslow's hierarchy and and what we have to do to support students. But I think our our second goal clearly needs to be to prioritize the social, emotional well-being of Portland students, faculty and staff. To do that, first initiative under the school I have is to support faculty, staff and students in the transition back to in-person teaching and learning by determining and addressing the effect of the trauma resulting from the school closure in March 2020, national unrest experienced during the summer of 2020 and the ongoing pandemic. So we're doing that now, you know, we're starting, you know, to gather our our sense of where our students are in terms of a a a social and emotional well-being place. I'll be honest with you, right now, after the first week, things are looking really good. Kids are happy to be back, you know, we're in, we're in very small numbers now because of the hybrid and the one day of distance learning. But I hope this holds. I suspect we're in a little bit of a honeymoon. And I think that we'll start to see the influence of trauma and other behaviors this result from that as we start to get more comfortable and move forward into the year. And I think we have a process now to support those children.
And I expect we're going to see even more once PVLA starts matriculating back into the folds of of full-time school as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's ongoing for sure.
I think my, the principals and I are enjoying the honeymoon, but we aren't expecting it to last forever. And we're going, we're going to get back at it pretty quickly with a lot of our our youngsters. So to that end, we are, we are in the process of designing a program of tier one, tier two and tier three social, emotional and behavioral interventions to support students who present with various degrees of dysregulation. That is, is well underway. I think that's reflected in the budget that helped us for, and I'm very excited, put in place for the first time a board certified behavior analyst. We have a BCBA on faculty, which is outstanding. She's already started giving us tier one interventions. And of course, you know, we have the the new K six Bridges Program to support, that's at the tier three level, to support our more highly dysregulated students. So I I think we've taken good steps in that direction, but we got to, we we need, we need to build that capacity further. Then that leads, I think nicely into the the next initiative, which is to implement and monitor the efficacy of the new Bridges Program for grades K through six, which is, you know, where housed at Brownstone, the Wheeler Program for grades seven through 12, which is here at the high school, and the influence of the newly added added board certified behavior analysts. I I see those as outstanding additions to our program to support our more dysregulated youngsters.
I have just a quick question on the new Bridges Program. Are the students spending more time there right now because it's a new program? My understanding was that we were going to move different age groups in and out of the program during the course of the day. But are they, like the Wheeler Clinic, the kids are assigned to the Wheeler Clinic because they're coming back in from outplacement or they were keeping them from going to outplacement? But is that the case with the Bridges Program? Do you know, Charles?
I do. It it's very flexible. There, there's no one type of student that's in there. All of the students come in with with unique accommodations and modifications in their IPs. Some are in there for partial days, some are in there for full days, some are more check-in. So it it's a flexible program that it gives us different ways to support different types of students.
Okay. Oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
And and that's, that's consistent with the Wheeler Program too. And then that leads to the last one, which is design and implement a strategic plan focused on a district-wide framework for students and and staff, social, emotional well-being. That includes, but is not limited to, professional development for faculty and staff, universal screening, science-based approaches to behavior management, and a sequence of K through 12 social and emotional learning curriculum and programming. And again, this, if you'll remember, is being spearheaded by Mari Redington, who has already provided some professional development for our faculty and will continue to in-service us and help guide us in the development of this very Mark Brackett-like approach to social and emotional well-being.
Charles, can I ask, is that SEL program currently happening in grades four and up, or is it still stopping at grades two and three?
Nope. And so a gilder sleeve, it is second step. That's where we, so we we have second step in grades two through four. And then we have different responsive classroom at Valley View. And then it becomes a little bit more advisory-driven at Brownstone and then advisor-driven at the middle school.
Okay, so so should it be the same in fourth grade as it was in second and third, or is it different?
It it should, it it's mostly second step, but there may be different kinds of lessons that Sam Starr is using.
Okay, I'm just, I'm only asking because I have a second and a fourth grader, and my fourth grader said she's so sad she doesn't get Mr. Starr anymore.
Oh, no, I think he's, he should be there as a special.
Okay. Maybe she just hasn't had him yet.
Had him yet, probably, right? All right, so are you all comfortable with with the social, emotional goal?
Definitely.
All righty, so let's then talk about the academic goal, right? So what we need to do is identify gaps in learning that occurred as a result of the spring 2020 school shutdown and reprioritize curriculum instruction assessment to support all students. So the first thing we're in the process of doing is we're redesigning the 2020, 2021 Portland Assessment Calendar with a focus on gathering baseline data to determine the extent, if any, of COVID-related learning loss. We we haven't done those assessments yet, just so. Our focus really has been getting students back in school and getting comfortable before we start giving them lots of tests. But at some point, the tests are coming, right? We we need to use our Fanta's and Pennell, use our Ames Web, use our baseline assessment, and really on a student-by-student way, start figuring out how far behind they are from where we might expect them to be if COVID hadn't been here. I I certainly can share that data with you as we generate it. I anticipate we'll probably get our first good look at the data sometime in the early October timeframe. That is really important work ahead of us. Once we have that data, we're going to use baseline data to recalibrate curriculum and instruction in a concerted effort to fill gaps that occurred as a result of COVID-related learning loss.
Charles, do you think, is it going to be difficult to get all that data by October, considering you're only seeing kids two days a week?
It will be a challenge. It's not going to be easy, you know, but we're going to need to do it. We use, you know, the Fanta's and Pennell, but Teachers College running records, the Ames Web. We have lots of screenings that we do with kids. I think October might be a little ambitious, to be completely honest with you, but I would say by the middle of October, we we should have a a pretty good baseline snapshot of of where our kids are.
Sounds good.
And other than what do we, what we do now with remediation and extra help, will we be looking to create any other pockets of remedial work for kids who are behind and and are significantly be? Will we kind of rate the kids who are very behind as opposed to kids who are only slightly behind? I mean, will we, will we be creating anything new along the lines of that?
Great question. Next goal is design and implement a plan that reprioritizes all content standards to remediate and mitigate the ongoing effect of adjustments to teaching and learning resulted, resulting from the pandemic. So the answer to that is yes, we're going to use that data to group and regroup students, and we're going to meet them where they are, you know.
Good.
I I've been reading a lot of journal articles that say that we can expect on average, kids are anywhere from six months to two years behind where they might otherwise have been. That's, it's a little eye-opening and frightening, you know. There are some assessment results that I trust more than others. The one that I trust most, most in terms of literacy is the running records that we do with students. So I'm a little stressed out about that and, but we're, you know, if if our fourth graders are consistent with the research a year to two years behind, we have our leveled texts, we have our intervention programming, and we're going to meet the kids where they are. But we, you know, we have a mountain to climb. I just don't know how steep it is yet.
Have you seen any articles that talk about how quickly or not, the kids may be able to recover from this?
Yeah, that's, this is the national challenge ahead of us there. But I, there are lots of really smart, good people and institutions that are studying this very thing. So I expect Teachers College is going to start guiding us. And and we'll probably see other, other think tanks come forward with their recommendations. But no, this is, you know, we we could well be experiencing this pandemic for years to come. I think we have to reconcile with, we we don't know what it's caused yet. Could well have blown a hole in an entire generation of kids and and really made the the achievement gap even worse in in lots of respects, so eyes wide open on this one. So, and that gets right to the next initiative here, which is redesign curriculum instruction and assessment to support students in each of the three operating models, full in-person, hybrid and remote, and ensure a parallel experience for students who choose to return, who choose not to return in-person teaching and learning. So one of the places that need our focus, and not just in Portland, everywhere, is we don't want to create an even worse gap between students who are choosing not to come back and students who are, right? So we're trying to create a parallel experience. You know, our idea is to try to match what's happening in the classroom for our in-person students with what's happening in the virtual world. That, we don't have that dialed in perfectly, I'll be completely honest with you. But what we don't want to do is, when those students come back, have a cohort of kids who are dramatically different place than the kids who are here in person.
Right.
So we we have to study that, the the effect of the choice not to come back in person very closely. Then, of course, Dawn has her work cut out for her when it comes to support the work of planning and placement teams to determine the effects of COVID-related adjustments on each student's individualized, identified student's individualized education plan. So we know, and Dawn has mentioned to you, that that lots of students' IEP goals were significantly affected, especially in places like speech and language or occupational therapy, where the accommodations were not able to be, we were not able to maximize the influence of those accommodations because we were remote, right? I mean, you can't do OT over a computer screen. You know, you need that that in-person tactile experience to do physical therapy, occupational therapy, and in some cases, speech therapy. So, you know, obviously, there's a lawsuit that has been filed in the Southern District of New York. We have been named in it, along with every other school. But, you know, I expect that the needs of our our special education students are are going to, and I know Dawn's working very hard on this, have to be the forefront of our minds.
So, Charles, are you anticipating that we're going to have more kids identified as requiring 504s for special education services as a result of this?
Um, very well could happen. One, yes, maybe. I I don't know yet, but, you know, clearly, I would venture a guess that. I would venture a guess that there are two categories, other health impaired and socially and emotionally disturbed, that we may see a larger number of students qualify for based on the experience of the past six months. But I don't think we've realized that yet.
And I guess the two questions that I have is, is there any initiative about attendance and also grading? Those two things come to mind.
Yep, both of those things are, we just, another addendum.
Okay.
Just came out last week about attendance.
Oh, yes.
And I just sat in a webinar with the State Department today where we now have to weekly report, every week, every Wednesday by noon, Eric and I have to report on our students' attendance in-person and remote. So we've got new guidelines, because in remote, it's not really attendance, it's more participation, right? Are they, we have to report to the state now, all of our students who have chosen to stay home but are not reporting or not doing the work. So this is going to require a new system of monitoring that Eric Martin, the principal of our Virtual Learning Academy, has to figure out. And we're trying to determine some reasonable expectations that would count as a day of school participation in the PVLA. It's not easy, it's.
I'm sure it's not. And the other question is about grading based on participation or attendance, you know, by showing up in the classrooms in the synchronous learning remotely.
Correct.
Have we talked about that at all? And I don't think we need an initiative or a goal, but we may be having to look at that as a policy change.
Yep. Yeah, to be honest, we're we dramatically changed grading practices last year.
Right.
We're starting this year with the expectation that we're changing back to raise the bar. But I anticipate that we are going to have to continue to recalibrate that to be fair and reasonable as we go forward. What those look like right now, I think we kind of have to live with this a little bit and see how it goes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Goal Four here. I think this is the important conversation that we need to have about equity in the context of what's happening nationally, right? So as a goal, I would suggest, and again, feel free to wordsmith with me, but that we strategically revise all systems with the goal of increasing equity, advancing social justice, and fostering civil discourse amongst all Portland Public Schools stakeholders.
It sounds pretty broad to say revise all systems. It's like you're redoing the whole school system.
Defined systems.
Yeah, I think I do, let's look at the initiatives and then loop back to the goal. Because I think by looking at, you know, kind of what, how we would do this might start to identify those things we should take a look at. So the first initiative, I would like to see us create a Portland Public Schools Equity Task Force and design a strategic approach to identify inequity, advance social justice, and promote civil discourse in the Portland Public Schools.
That's good.
Yeah, who are you picturing on this Equity Task Force? Are you looking at like the broad community, parents, you know, students, teachers, staff, et cetera?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I wanted to share with you some ideas about how I would go about this. I would suggest, and again, knowing that we have a huge budget hole, kind of makes me anxious about this, but I would like to approach the Teachers Association and negotiate a new stipended position for a coordinator of the Diversity Task Force. I would see it as a teacher who is passionate about social justice and equity. I would think a reasonable compensation would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,500 for the year for that person to co-chair this task force with Eric Martin, right? And I would put Eric and this teacher who's getting the stipend in charge of putting together a committee with representatives from each of the schools and our community, and kind of make them the steering committee, you know, put them in charge of identifying and laying out a process for us as a district to engage in this work.
I would go along with that. I think that's where it has to, where it has to be. And I think the other, the other thing that's going to happen is, you know, from all the things, the webinars and things that I've attended, social emotional learning and equity go hand in hand. They, you don't get one without the other. So by the initiatives for social emotional learning, tying in with the equity part of it and the task force, I think that would be an awesome way to view what we, where we are and what we need to do to improve.
And then the other members of the committee would be under that, the teacher with the stipend and with Eric would be like family members or community members in general, like how would we post this out in like the River East or something, or?
I'd love to, I'd love to have a member of the board potentially be on the committee, you know. I'd really, I'd like to really empower that the committee to, you know, put together and solicit for participation, right? But, you know, as broad a cross-section of our community as we could, certainly, I would love to have, see us have open-choice students or parents on the committee, you know. You know, this committee may choose to liaison with the town side or other committees that are in Portland or more broadly in the state. You know, I'd like to kind of trust them and empower them to, you know, share with us and share with me what their vision for this would be.
The Wellness Committee could be a model for this particular task force, because there is a Wellness Committee that was headed up by Chris Sarah, made up of teachers, parents, students, who were talking about nutrition and health and safety, things related to wellness. And it worked really well. They came up with a really great plan.
I would also say that the work of the reopening committee is also a model for what this would look like.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So let's go through the other ones and then we can kind of think about it holistically, too. But I would also recommend, I think it's time for us to conduct a comprehensive audit of K through 12 curriculum and ensure that all curriculum aligns with current research, consistent with the goals of promoting greater equity in the Portland Public Schools. So there are some really, really fine tools out there that we can use to empower Eric and our curriculum specialists to engage the vertical teams in a look at how we teach about Native Americans, how we teach about all different aspects of our history and our ongoing evolution as a nation, right? I think this audit would be really important, and, you know, we have heard some horror stories in our state of, you know, teachers doing, making some very poor decisions in how they teach about certain things. In my wife's district in Hampden, there was a teacher who cast the only African-American students in her class in the role of a slave for a class play. That was probably a bad decision. You know, I would say as part of this audit, we really want to make sure that when we get to those topics that we know are fraught, that we teach them the right way. And I think if we set that down as a marker and asked Eric to take a good look at the curriculum through an equity lens, I think that would be a smart thing to do.
Really glad to see this on that list.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, and Native Americans in November has got to go, you know, that we have to, we have to, yeah, fine-tune it, and we have to make sure that we do have the equity.
And let's be clear, we know it's not just happening elsewhere in the state. We know this is a problem in the Portland schools, too. So it's not, it's not just we're seeing the problems elsewhere. We see problems with assignments in our district, so we, this is really important.
Yep, no doubt.
Sure.
Charles, is there going to be any plan for helping individual teachers? I mean, right now, I completely understand that our professional development really needs to be focused on social emotional learning. But will there be a plan for professional development for teachers for equity also? I mean, even the way you teach a class that has students of color and it is different, the way you give assessments needs to be different. Is that something that we need to consider? I mean, I would love to, but I guess I'm asking, can we? Can we consider that as well?
So if, again, you're teeing me up, if you look at the next initiative, that's exactly it, right? So identify and implement professional development programming that equips all faculty and staff in the Portland Public Schools with the skills necessary to identify and address inequity and promote social justice, right? So there, the reality is, the answer to that question is, there's a lot of PD out there. I think if you listen to the research, some people will tell you that you have to be really careful about what PD you find. There are some people that would tell you that no PD is better than bad PD focused on equity.
That's true.
So one of the things I would task the task force with would be to go out there and research the various professional development models that ask us to explore these issues and find the ones that work so that we don't screw this up.
I think that's a great, I'm even looking just back in initiative in talking about the audit of the curriculum. Could we include audit of curriculum and assessment in that? Or does assessment kind of get looped in under curriculum as well?
Sure, throw that in there. Curriculum and assessment, we can do this.
Yeah, awesome.
And it's a long game, you know, the social emotional learning equity connection that we listened and Laurel went to a couple of the webinars. These school systems are in two, three, four-year models, working through stakeholders, starting with teachers and administrators, working down to students. And there's multi-layers that can happen at the same time. But to change the culture of a school, it's not going to happen overnight, so it is a long, long-term commitment. And it's well worth it, because when you have that equity and you have the social emotional connections, kids will learn and will be a lot happier, because they'll be valued for who they are, and we'll meet them where they are, not not expecting them to do things that they are not able to do. I think a lot of the behavior problems and absenteeism will disappear when kids feel valued and we meet them where they are.
I definitely see Goal Four and Five here as a multi-year goal. I don't think these are things that you check the box and are done with ever. I think that these are part of a process that you need to develop and then sustain for many years before you sort of, you know, enjoy the fruits of that labor. But I think it's time to get started on it.
Great. In looking at the Goal Four, is that something that should also apply at the board level? Is that something that should be an initiative for the board to do some of this? Absolutely. Kind of looking inward and see where we are with that and.
Yeah, if we set the policy, it has to come from us, right?
Well, implicit bias exists in all of us. You know, that word is getting floated around, but we all have experiences that make us react in certain ways, and understanding our reactions, we can change those things. We can't change our experience, but we can change our reaction and the bias that we bring to certain things. So I would think that the board should also be examining, doing a self-examination and participating maybe in some of the professional development.
Sure. And again, I would love to see our, hopefully, if you approve these soon-to-be-created task force, bring forward those ideas and invite board members to join the PD that, once we identify it. And again, there's a lot of it out there, and some of it's not good. I've seen some of it. I've been to some of it. And what we need to do is make sure that what we find is research-based and, you know, starts us on the right path, because false starts are a pain in the neck to recover from, so.
Yeah, we do more damage. I heard Eric say something about using Ruler, which is one of the one of the systems that brings equity and SEL into the mix. Is that something that he's looking at?
Yeah, Ruler is more of a social emotional learning. It's not specifically equity. To the extent that they overlap, there's definitely plenty of room for it. But Ruler is the Mark Brackett Yells Child Center program for social and emotional learning.
Okay.
At the, for Goal Four, the statement at the top, rather than, I don't know if we're at that yet, kind of cycling back, but the, where it says strategically revise all systems, maybe strategically review all systems with the goal of implementing changes needed to increase equity, advance social justice, that sort of a thing, rather than.
I like review, too.
I do, too.
Yeah, rather than you're committing to revise everything right up front, it's like, well, you're going to review everything, and you're only going to revise what you need.
I agree, yeah. Better verb.
Good word.
Charles, we've talked about this before, but just in case you haven't had a chance to look into it yet, as you're thinking through the professional development piece, I was so impressed with what I heard from the Nogatuck District. Meg and I attended that workshop together last winter. What the Nogatuck Board about and administrative team have done together to create professional development for their district was really a pretty phenomenal undertaking. And it started with the administration, and they went through a year's worth of very intense PD on their own, an equity consultant, and then took what they had learned under the equity consultant's guidance, and then were able to offer the professional development themselves to their staff members and district. And that, hearing them talk about how well that model has worked for them, really, really made a positive impression on me. Like.
Like a train, the trainer.
Yeah, well, again, the way I would see that playing out is, I would love for, once we get this task force up and going, send them on some field trips, you know, let them go visit Nogatuck, let them go visit other districts that are ahead of us in this area, and, you know, sort of let them approach this with a your first charge is develop a strategic plan for us, you know.
Right.
But that involves some, the hard work of reading the journals and visiting the places that have done the work and you know, that's how we got to Reader's Workshop, right? And that's how we got Bridges, right? I mean, we went out and we visited Madison and visited various districts that did this and asked the hard questions, and I think that's what this group will do, too.
Great.
Good.
So then the last one I have is sort of build community, right? By designing and implementing a program of curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular options that promote civil discourse and civic engagement, right? You know, and again, I would say, I would see this as part of the task force's responsibility to bring in speakers, bring in training, you know, start clubs, you know, put programs in place. You know, and I would love to see them at some point in November come to the board with a proposed budget for this, you know. If there are honorariums, we need to pay speakers. If there are field trips, we want to send students on. You know, it would be nice for us to support that, and Eric and I also had a conversation today. I see this as a perfect opportunity for a Gilder Sleeve grant. So we can get some funding behind this and, you know, give it a little seed money and let it, let it, let it grow.
Great. And just to, you know, I know we're in a, in a budget crisis this year, but, you know, hopefully we come out the other side of this and everything's, everything's all sunshine and flowers on the other side. But I, you know, as we, as we as a board are setting our priorities, these priorities looking forward, and they are our financial priorities as well, too, and so I hope we'll keep in mind that this particular goal might take some some investment financially on our part, and I hope that we'll all be committed to that.
Well, boy, is that a perfect pivot to the next one.
Yes, it is.
Holy cow, I'm glad everybody's sitting. I'm not going to talk about numbers yet. You're going to hear about that next Tuesday, Facilities Committee. Let's take deep breaths. It's going to be okay. Goal Five here is using Portland's Vision of the Graduate and the Sightlines Report, which I've looked at, design and embark upon a five-to-10-year plan for the Portland Public Schools that addresses current facility needs, grade-level configurations, and and physical structures necessary to maximize 21st century teaching and learning. Out of this, this is sort of how I see us moving these needs forward, right? I think it's first, it's important for us to complete and publish the K through 12 Portland Public Schools Vision of the Graduate and begin using the vision of the graduate to inform all decision-making in the district. Once we do that, I think even starting as early as next Tuesday, it's important for us to analyze the Sightlines Report and design a communication strategy to share facility needs with all stakeholders in the Portland Public Schools.
Has the Sightline Report, has anybody received that beside? I mean, I just haven't, you've talked about it, but is that available to board members?
Not yet.
Next Tuesday at five o'clock, the Facilities Committee is going to meet and a representative from Sightlines is going to share the report with the Facilities Committee.
Right.
So we haven't received.
Right, the purpose of that presentation is to share the initial findings and then work with the Facilities Committee to design a strategic plan that involves when and how the, the needs are shared with the full board and the talent, right? So part of the process that Sightlines does is they, they not only lead us through an initial understanding of what the needs are, but they work with us and give us their experience in terms of how districts have started with the report and then used it over a 10-year period to, to mobilize, to develop the political action committees, to advocate for the bonding packages necessary to bring those recommendations to life. So I think that's going to start one week from today.
So that, so the, the Facilities Committee is going to meet on that sometime during the day on the 15th?
Five, five o'clock for.
Five o'clock, can other board members listen to that as well? I mean, if it were an in-person meeting, we could attend, right? I mean, we can't be a quorum or something.
I think this is an ad hoc committee and I think we have to be careful not to have more than two. I think we can't, what is it, three committee members, three board members?
It would be four.
Yeah, I don't think, we have to be careful because I had to step back from the solar committee because there were three board members on and I would have been the fourth.
Right, so you can't have four, that's what, so nobody, I don't know who else is on it right now. Just three already?
Dave and Chris and myself.
Oh, okay.
But will you all give us the, the full report at the meeting on Tuesday? Is that the story?
I, I, I think the approach is let the Facilities Committee take a look at it and then let the Facilities Committee and, and I sort of talk about how and when we want to do that, right? Do, do we want to give it to you right away? Like, or do, you know, part of this is, is what, what's the strategy? How, how do we now use this report and in a strategic way go forward? And, and I think that that's the work of the, the, the subcommittee to kind of kick that idea around. And, and if the committee says, well, let's just give it to everyone tonight and throw it out there. I don't know if that's what Sightlines would recommend in terms of their experience and how you do these things in the past. But the, the who, what, when, where, and how of releasing this information in a way that is part of a planned process, I think is really important to set the stage for what we need to do in order to advocate for the facility needs that, that we all know are, are imminent.
Right.
So is that, I'm just confused. Are you saying that that's not a meeting like the policy, like a public, because the people could attend? Policy meeting.
Yeah, it's, no, it's not. It's different because it's an ad hoc committee.
And is that, could you point me to just where I would go to find that? Is that in?
Probably in our bylaws.
Yeah.
Probably in our bylaws, we could look at it after.
Committees don't allow for other people.
Like the other committees, personnel doesn't allow public audience.
Right.
All the other ones, so.
Yeah. Personnel is not an ad hoc committee, that's a.
No, it's a definite committee for the board, yeah.
Committee of the board and.
Right.
And that's, is that going to be on Zoom?
We've, we've been doing the, the Policy and Personnel Committee has been a Google Meet.
A Google Meet, yeah.
Well, I, I'll take, I'll take my direction from you. I mean, the, the, the recommendation for this process again has been brought forward to Carl and me from the Sightlines people. They, they, they have finished their report. When Carl spoke with them, I haven't spoken with them yet, but Carl said, what do we do now? And, and the recommendations from the Sightlines people, who we paid a good chunk of money to do this was, start with your Facilities Committee, let them take a look at it and let us lead that group in the process of designing the rollout plan for this. That, that's the Sightlines recommendation, you know? Clearly, if, if, if you have different intentions, you know, I'm, I'm happy to.
I just like the idea of hearing directly from the people we paid $30,000 for the report.
You're going to, you will, Kim.
When does that happen?
Yeah, this is just the, the, the next Tuesday is the plenary session. They, they are prepared to give a full comeback. They give us two reports. They give us one, which is the, the strategy session. And then the second one is the full presentation that could happen at a board meeting, a town council meeting, a town hall meeting, you know, however we want to do it, which I think is what we're going to talk about next Tuesday at five.
Right.
All right, I, I just think it's hard to take a position eventually in something when you haven't seen.
Well, you're going to though.
Will we get the report on Tuesday? So we're going to physically get a copy of the report? No, you're saying that your group may prevent the full board from receiving copies of the report, right?
Nobody's going to prevent, no, I don't think that we're saying that at all. I think we're saying that Sightline is, Sightline is directing the information.
Charles can answer that.
Yeah, you, you are definitely going to get a copy of the report and you're definitely going to have the opportunity to get a full presentation with the professionals from Sightline that includes a question and answer session, right? They, they, they do.
But not just for the board, it's going to be some kind of a community meeting.
No, it could be just for, I think that's TBD. It could be a whole, it could be just the board. I mean, I think that, that, that's sort of the, 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 from what I understand, I'll, I'll go back to the beginning.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, I think the full board needs to get a report from, directly from the company since the board paid for it. And I think it's fine that.
I don't know why you're going down this path. We, we've said all this, this is part of the process. We, we have the company do it, building a facility is going to meet, we're going to go through the initial findings and then kind of talk about how we want to go to the next step, which is probably a meeting where they share the full report and they have a meeting with the board. Because once these numbers are fixed now, it's going to be, everybody's going to be speculating and what we're closing, what we're doing, what we're doing that.
Right.
Any of that, even.
I just, I get tripped up with people saying, yes, we're absolutely going to get it. But then it turns into we're probably going to do a meeting with the board. So I, it's just a language thing for me. If it's, you know, it's.
Yeah, to moment, I would take you back and, and maybe it's a, a wordsmithing of the initiative. Because the way I have it written here i- is analyze the Sightlines Report and design a communication strategy to share facility needs with all stakeholders in the Portland Public Schools, right? That, so where, that's where, where, where we would start, right? That it, the, the, the report is done, it's going to be shared with the Facilities Committee and then that Facilities Committee is going to, going to, you know, design the communication track. Everybody's going to see this, right? I mean, the, the full board, the town council, everybody's going to, going to see these numbers. And, and, you know, a lot of them, you know, clearly are no surprises to anybody. The roofs, the track, the HVAC systems, you know, they, just look at the facilities. The age of brownstone is, is, you know, going to, they're going to go over all of that with us. But the purpose of what's going to happen next Tuesday is less about what the needs are and more about how we strategically develop a process that is going to move us towards what we all know is coming, right? Which sort of gets to the next initiative, which again, my recommendation is after we've analyzed the report and designed a communication strategy, we should be creating a facilities steering committee comprised of a variety of community stakeholders and use the committee to develop and communicate a strategic plan for the Portland Public Schools, right? And that's where we started talking last year and we heard from the town council that they would like representation on that committee. But it, it's time for a steering committee, a, a facility steering committee to, to, you know, there are lots of different ways to do this, whether they're political action committees or not, but to take a look at, at what the needs are and, you know, what our current grade level configurations are and other things. And, and, you know, begin the process of, of, you know, identifying the, the, the future of the district.
And I think to reassure Tim also, the ad hoc committee can't vote on anything. We can, you know, we can listen, we can hear what Carl has discovered and what Charles has discovered, but there's no voting on anything. And, and actually, if the task force is created for a facilities renovation or, or strategic plan, that would be, the ad hoc, probably building a grounds committee would go away. Because we would have finished our, our job of getting the site plan done and out to be looked at by everybody.
So, and, and again, if you sort of see the initiatives, I kind of, I think I'm, I'm trying to lay them out in a, in a sequential way, starting next Tuesday, which is analyze the report, design the, the communication plan. Two, the, once we execute the communication plan, pull together a facilities steering committee that then the last one, last initiative is advocate for a five to 10 year strategic plan that considers 21st century teaching and learning priorities, facility needs, grade level configurations, fiscal realities, and the Portland vision of the graduate, right? So I think that what, what happens after we communicate this, we get the committee together, that's where what we all think we know is going to happen is people are, the, the, the big question is going to come out. Do, do we need five schools? You know, what, what do we need to do here? And, and there are a, as many different opinions about where to go as, as, you know, there are people in Portland, right? So, you know, I think that the, the, the lift, the challenge of the facilities steering committee is going to be to, you know, put together the focus groups, do the surveying, engage the community and, you know, talk about Portland's vision of the graduate in the context of where are we going to be 10 years from now and what are our buildings going to look like in 10 years? But the big stuff.
I just want to get a copy of the report to look at, that's all. I'm interested.
We got it, Tim.
Got it, make a note of it.
You want a report, we got it.
Just want a report.
We'll get one.
We'll get one, we'll get, we just don't know when, but we'll get one.
Yeah, I promise you'll know and. You know, I've seen it, it's, it's, um, yeah, we need a communication strategy. You know, it, it's, they're big numbers.
That makes sense to communicate a communication strategy, it makes a lot of sense. It's a pretty serious document you made here, Charles.
I, I see this as the rest of my career frankly, unless you guys are ready.
This is our 2020, 2021 goals, these are like.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I, I think it's great, I think.
Awesome job.
It's great.
Well, he, he, here's what I, I suggest. Why don't you just digest this, it's a lot. We, we have a, a, our, our meeting next Tuesday. You know, between now and then, email me, call me, kick ideas around. I, I would love to get this on the agenda for next Tuesday for your approval. I, you know.
Do it.
You know, mull it over, you all have access and editing rights to it. You know, if, if you want to make comments or you see things here as you're mulling it over that you think we, I can make better, you know, this is definitely ambitious, but it's exciting too. I think there's a lot of, a lot of opportunities here. We, we just.
I'm so sorry, I, I don't anticipate making any changes, but I do not have editing rights. I don't know if everybody else does. Mine is you only for sure, for both documents.
Changing it right now.
Which is fine for me, I don't know if anybody else has intentions to edit anything or get comments.
I already saved a backup copy too, so edit away. I've got, you all have editing rights now, so. And by editing rights, you know, you can make comments in the margins or, you know, strikes or whatever you need.
Don't go ahead and delete the whole thing is what you're saying?
You could, I made a backup, but you, with editing rights, you do have the ability to do that, yes. Although.
Can I just make a suggestion with regards to that?
Sure.
Um, yeah, so I have editing access now. You may want to have us do, I forget. You go up in the top right of the document, the editing mode. If you do the second tab down where it says suggesting, then the edits become suggestions. Otherwise, it'll be really hard for you to keep track of.
It will.
They got it, you're right, suggesting is on.
Well, each of us will need to do that when we do it.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Otherwise, people can.
Where do you find that, Chris?
It's in the little.
Chris has already typed.
Up to where.
Looks like a little.
Show you how that can be viewed.
Like a little blackboard with a pencil in it.
Yeah, and then you drop down, you click on that and go down to where it says suggesting.
It's in the toolbar, Tim, all the way over on the right hand side.
Okay, tools, oh, sujut, review suggested edits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, Charles, you'll already go in and make the change we talked about on the goal four, right? I don't need to do that.
Yes, I, I tweaked that.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Oh, that's already in here, I can actually see it. Oh, yeah. It's like magic, just like magic.
Yeah.
No, that's great.
Hey, I'm just going to throw this out there because I'm a, I'm a goal oriented person from work here. But as far as tracking this, I mean, I'll just throw this out there and you don't think about it. What we do is work on our goals, we have a 25, 50, 75%, 100% completion. Somehow we track these to maybe some kind of a, where are we with, with our progress on these goals?
Definitely, yeah, I, I, I think that I, I would be more than happy and committed to, you know, reporting out on to you our progress on these all year. I mean, and, and you'll probably hear, I know, actually, it's not probably, you will hear in both Dawn's and Eric's comments throughout the year. And I think in my communications reports to you at the board meetings, I will, will keep you posted on all of these things. Some, some of them you'll, you'll probably be more aware of than, than others based on, you know, where, whether you end up on some of these committees or not. But I, I would, would certainly be happy to make sure that I, I provide updates on them. And then, you know, I think in, in fairness, both as part of the mid-year evaluation you do with me and then the end of year evaluation that you do with me, I, I, I think that you should be holding me accountable for these. And, and I can provide you documents and evidence, qualitative, quantitative data, whatever you need that I think, you know, demonstrates my efforts to shepherd these things through to completion. Of course, some of them won't be done for 10 years from now, but at least you'll see the progress in that direction.
Well, would, would it be helpful to do a timeline of what is, you know, for instance, some of the stuff has already happened? So, you know, we know that we've, we've done some of the initiatives in, in the first goal. But would a timeline be helpful and look at it from now to 2031?
Well, I think at the, at the start of this, Charles, don't you say that these goals are going to be what the board will use to develop a strategic plan? So we'll get more specifics.
Definitely.
In order to measure progress, like in years one, we're going to concentrate on A, B, C. To work towards this goal. So I guess it, it'll get fleshed out as we progress.
As we progress.
Decide and see if we have a, an agreement that these are going to be our goals.
Right, and, and what happens in, in the organization is, is that as soon as you set these goals, they become part of the way I evaluate the leadership team, the faculty, the staff, so.
Exactly.
The, the goals of everybody in the organization flow from your goals. Now, not everybody in the evaluation is going to be involved in developing a facilities plan, but everybody in the organization will have some skin in the game for some of these, right? Like the teaching and learning, the social emotional, the equity goals, you know? And then what the administrators do is once I set my goals with the administrators that reflect these priorities, they set the goals with all of their teachers. So it really does trickle down and, and weave its way into everybody's consciousness. down and, and, and weave its way into everybody's, um, consciousness. So I, I did notice on the agenda that we had equity as a standalone item. Um, I feel like we covered it in, in goal four. Um, but it, was there any, um, o- other discussion that, that we wanted to have? And in particular, I know that there was, it was brought up in the past about the potential for us, um, joining forces with or liaising with the, the town, um, the town councils. Uh, I've forgotten, any equity task force? I'm not sure what.
How about the solidarity task force?
Solidarity Task Force, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I brought that up at the last meeting because in, in conversation, I've been, I've been on some of my bi-weekly calls with Susan Bransfield and a few other folks in town, having this ongoing conversation about, um, about equity in Portland. And she had mentioned that, that the Board of Selectmen intended to, um, create this solidarity task force and that they were hoping to have a liaison from the Board of Education. So I think it's important that we, that we provide support for that, especially because the tasks that they intend to work on are, the stated goal is for that group to work with the Board of Education, um, and with the Portland Public Schools as well as youth services in town.
My feeling was too, that the municipal area of equity, um, it, it does align with the schools, but the schools are in a different place, I think. Um, and they were talking about, um, you know, e- employment and housing and a lot of things that are related and make the community a better community. But I think, um, the board, um, needs their own task force and we can liaison with them, but I, I wouldn't want to see, um, the town task force, um, try to implement things within the school. And I think we have to kind of separate town and gown at that point, um, because I think the town has to work on their own, um, their own issues.
Are we, are we going to have our own task force? We just talked about here?
We have.
I guess, I, I was, when we talked about it at our last meeting, I thought it might make more sense to wait until they, the Board of Selectmen kind of flesh out what the task force is, who's going to be on it, what it's going to do, you know, which I think, I thought they were going to do at their next meeting, the middle of this month. So I, I thought.
I, I would agree.
Back on the agenda in our first month, our first meeting in October to talk about a liaison.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's great. I also think if the Board of Ed is interested in pursuing, um, some implicit bias work, some professional development for ourselves, that we should, you know, keep that ball rolling and think about scheduling something. Um, we've had a couple of different names recommended to us for really great trainers. Um, so.
Who's that?
Blurring that. You know what? I'm sorry. I'm so tired and I can't bring up the name of the person that, um, Philip, both Philip and Kate Lawson recommended the same person on, on separate occasions. And I know that there are some other good people available to us through CAVE. Um, but I, you know.
I'd like to see us do something in conjunction with the press, professional development of, um, the teachers and the certified staff, um, so that we're all on the same page rather than do a separate, um, training for, uh, the Board of Ed members, to be honest. I think that's more valuable.
I, I, I would disagree with that only because I feel like our purpose is so different from that of the, uh, certified staff. I, I really feel like we need to have it first before, how, how can we, you know, I, I just feel like we need to have it first so we can know what we're doing before we set the policy or direct professional development or whatever is appropriate. I just feel like it needs to come from.
Yeah. Well, we're not going to direct the professional development. That's going to be Charles and, and the administrators are going to determine that.
Regardless, doesn't it make sense though, that the board should have it first? I mean, we, for us, we don't need to learn how to appropriately assess students. We don't need to learn how to deliver instruction. We don't need to learn how to look at curriculum. We need to learn how our actions as Board of Education members affect the children in our community.
That may be true. I just think implicit bias, um, in general is, is self-examination, but, um, we could talk about, you know, who's going to do the training and then we can figure out whether we do it as a group with the teachers.
Implicit bias certainly makes sense, Meg, because that is not specific to our role. So, I mean, if that's what we're talking, then, then that makes sense.
But, but a board-specific training, I think, is very, would be very useful for all of us as a group. I mean, I, I personally see a lot of value in it. And I think also there's a little bit of leading by example there, um, that this is a priority for us.
Oh, it is.
We're making it a priority for us, our time, with our money, um, you know, with that, the energy that we're expending as a board. I.
Yep. Well, I think a task force, if we develop a task force, that would be part of, um, you know, development of, of, and PD is always important for board members on any number of levels. Um, you know, that.
That would be their, that'd be one of their goals, would be to implement something, train, make it available.
Training, yep. And decide whether we do it as a board separately from other, other groups. But yeah, no, implicit bias is very important.
Yeah, I, I, I would definitely task the task force with the idea of examining the whole school ecosystem from, from the board all the way to every custodian, paraprofessional, secretary, teacher, administrator in the district. And, and, you know, I, I'm excited for them to go visit a place like Nogatuck or another town that, that may be ahead of us and, and learn from them, you know? What did they do? I, I am sure, I can name you one off the top of my head, that, you know, there, there is some research out there that says some Board of Education policies have some zero tolerance languages in them, don't promote equity the way we might otherwise like them to. Um, you, you know, that's a definitely a, a Board of Education discussion. And, and I think that, that our task force is going to help us root those things out, you know, and then help us understand our role in, in deciding whether zero tolerance-based policies are the types of things we want if our goal is overall greater equity. Um, but let, let's, let's let them do their work. I think, you know, if we put the right people on this force, task force, I think Eric will be, you know, has some great experience with it. And, and I'm sure that, you know, if we can find a stipend and, and find a person on our faculty with a passion for this, I think, you know, they could put together something pretty special for us.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
Do you have any teachers in mind off, not that you need to share the names of us, but can, do you have a list of people already you're thinking of?
I do. I do indeed. Yep. Yeah.
Charles, as a, um, former member of the stipend negotiation team, last year with Philip.
Oh, right.
I'm just curious, when you, when you did, when you're looking at the stipend for that, did you look at that, uh, that scheme they had created for the, the, I forget what they were, if they were like class numbers or?
Yeah, the tiers, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, the tiers.
Yeah, I've, I've got to go back.
How that matches the tiers?
Yeah. I, I will study that for sure. And, and, you know, it, it will be a subject of, uh, discussion with, with Sue McDougal, you know, but I.
I'm sure it will.
I want to put together a job description and figure out how many hours of meetings and, and work this would involve. Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll put it in the right tier for sure.
Good.
All right, well, look, it's not even 11 o'clock.
I know.
Oh, are we done? Is this like a?
It's not 11 o'clock and I'm not going to have to spend the next two days feeling very angry phone calls.
But you know, my, I, we, we made the right decision on that. We were ahead of the curve.
We were ahead of the curve.
You see that like 60 Republicans put out a letter saying the, the last gasp to hope for football for, if not for the fall, now they're trying to push for the spring.
It seems to, there seems to be cross-party support for football, I would say.
There is. Well, there is. That's what, well, Joe Amaresca or whatever, up in the legislature, he's a football coach for crying out loud.
It, it is frankly, though, a little bit alarming, the number of people, many of whom you think of as, you know, a good head on their shoulders.
Is, yeah, good, pretty wise folks.
Their minds over the football thing. And I really, I really do appreciate the stance that you took, Charles, uh, you know, ahead of the CIAAC getting on board. I, you know, we, there's no doubt that we made the right decision.
Yeah, thank you. Well, it's funny. I was, I was teasing Jenny this weekend when I said, you know, in my time in Portland, we changed the entire K through eight math curriculum. The entire K through eight math curriculum, and I didn't get one parent phone call or email about it. But holy cow.
Touch football.
Wow, man. It was remarkable.
Did anyone complain to you about swimming, out of curiosity?
Yes, they did. I, um, that is that, I.
That's a tough one.
That is a tough one.
It is.
It's a tough one. And, and, you know, we're going to, we're going to have to come back to it, um, at so, at some point. But right now, I've, I've said that we're not cross-cohorting our kids with Rocky Hill and Cromwell and, and I'm, I'm not prepared to get behind that until we've had at least two weeks of school to see how it's going, right?
Yeah, that's fair.
So, you know, the, the thing that keeps coming into my mind, and I know it's not directly related to what we're doing, but we're going to need to figure out how we maintain our consistency in our positions when it comes to our other athletes leaving the district for meets or games or whatever.
I agree, Sharon.
Because I think that that's going to, you know, kind of reignite the, the fire, so to speak.
Right.
If it's just fine with us, you know, by way of example, soccer players can go wherever and play soccer, but why can't we have football?
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I just think it's something I've been thinking about. I think we all should be kind of thinking about that.
Well, I was surprised that soccer wasn't canceled because even though it's not a contact sport per se, there's still some close.
Yeah, it is.
Hissing and fuming.
Mostly feet, but still, you know.
Yeah, but still, and it's hands and it's spitting and it's all, all of the above. And when you get to that level.
It's still early. Wait a minute.
I gotta say, right, it's still early.
I, I.
Just something I've been thinking about, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a good.
No, it's a good point.
We'll hear about it.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all the work. There was a lot of thought put into all of this and, um, it's really come together beautifully and we'll get a chance to look at it and tweak it or make comments. And, um, it, it really is, uh, very comprehensive. I don't think you've left anything out, at least not looking at it right now.
Yeah, we got a lot to do. So it will definitely come back on our, our board meeting for the 15th. Hopefully by then you'll be comfortable with it and, and prepared to, to, you know, entertain a, a motion to approve and, and we'll, we'll see where those chips fall.
And so, Charles, just out of curiosity, is this set of goals, I mean, obviously so many of this is going to be ongoing, will this just kind of get modified yearly? Is that the plan?
Um, yeah, of cour-, I mean, every year you, you've approved, um, the, the, you used to call them the, the teaching priorities, right?
Right.
If, if you look back at those, you'll probably see some similarities to these. The difference is that in years past, when you set the teaching and learning priorities, you weren't managing a pandemic too. So, you know, I think we've, we've opened a new frontier here because we're managing this very unique crisis. Um, you know, so hopeful, I'm hoping that clearly goal one goes away at, at some point soon, right?
That'd be nice.
You know, we can, at some point, say, goal one done. And then, but I, I do think you will see social, emotional, learning and academic always be reflected in our, in our, our priorities. And of course, equity, I think, is here for the long haul. And of course, the facility needs are, are not going away. We have, we all know, we, we are looking at, at some, some significant needs in terms of our buildings. Um, so definitely goal four and five are with us for the long haul. We're never going to get away from academic priorities. And I think social, emotional learning is also going to be here for the long haul too.
And I know, um, CAVE has indicated that when the legislature meets, um, they probably are going to mandate, um, a social, emotional learning component. And I think the state of Connecticut Department of Education is already building that resource. Um, they've, you know, talked, I've talked to a couple of people about the Castle and Mark Brackett and all of the people that are involved in that, um, that whole best practices movement. So I think we're going to see a mandate. And if we're ahead of the game and we've already started the process, I think that'll be even better.
Yeah. Yeah. And we're, we're in a really good place. I think that we, we've made the right investments in a BCBA. I think the, the Bridges program is terrific. We're going to make sure that the Wheeler program gets even better. Um, and our investment in Mari Riedington to help us understand it. Um, everything I've seen from, seen from her matches very closely to Mark Brackett's work, but is a little bit better, frankly, um, than the rule.
Oh, good.
So, um, you know, she, she did the, the whole last Wednesday PD that she did with us was fabulous and very well received. So, um, we're off to a good start.
Uh, Mark Brackett wrote a book called Permission to Feel, and I, I got a copy of it. I started to read it. And his involvement in the whole social, emotional learning process is because in middle school, he was bullied. He was little, he was different. And, um, he, he writes about what he put up with and how nobody ever asked him how he felt until his uncle Malcolm asked him. And that led out a whole flood of emotions that no one ever cared whether he was happy or not, and he was pretty miserable. And, uh, he talked about going back to his middle school as an adult and having that visceral, uh, reaction to what had happened to him when he was 13 and he was in his 30s. And he had gotten a PhD, actually. Um, he was a miserable student and very, very unhappy. But, um, it, it just points to the fact that kids can succeed and will be far more successful if we can address those needs and meet them where they are.
Definitely. Yep.
Yep.
Our motion to adjourn, we, I think we.
I don't think we have to, do we? Do we never really motion to?
We do because there's an agenda. Um, it, there is a, yeah.
Or we never officially accepted the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
That's true.
I move, we accept the agenda.
And adjourn.
All right, Tim and Laurel, okay. Who wants, who wants the adjournment?
I'll move.
Okay. And second?
Seconded.
Lauren Christensen? Okay. All right. I'll, I'll just put together a minute, uh, synopsis and give it to our friend Meg Wright for tomorrow.
Good.
All right.
Very good. Be well.
On adjournment or what?
Thank you, Charles.
You got to call most.
Thanks again, Charles. Nice, uh, really nice product you put out here in front of us.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
My team.
Yeah. All right. Good night, everyone.